Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the July 27th, 2020 meeting for the Westchester School Board. Let's begin with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America,
America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Before we get going tonight, similar to what we've done in previous virtual meetings, is just kind of run down the procedures for if you want to ask questions. One is at the beginning of the meeting, which is for agenda items only. And then there's also a section at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. So what have they received? Prior to giving your comments, please state your name and address and group affiliation. And then once you limit his or her comments to about two minutes or less. And all comments should be directed to the entire board. No more partisan, they address a single board member. It's not really a format for Q and A. It's just there to obviously share your thoughts. Thank you for your attention on that matter. All right, Ms. Cherishaw, roll call, please. Might be on mute, Ms. Cherishaw.
She is on, Linda, you're on mute.
You still are. Ms. Weh.
Linda, try it, try it now, Ms. Cherishaw.
Thank you.
There we go.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Here.
Ms. Chester.
Here.
Mr. Durnell.
Here.
Mr. Gallin.
Here.
Dr. Herman.
Here.
Mr. McCune.
Here.
Dr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Spackman.
Here.
Mrs. Tierney.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherishaw. All right, next I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the amendments of the June 22nd, 2020 monthly school board meeting.
I'll make a motion.
First by Mr. Spackman, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gallin, by a hair. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Cherishaw.
Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Dr. Herman.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell. Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cherishaw. Can you also please note that we met on Monday, 7:13 before our board retreat regarding a personnel and student matter? Next session. All right, next up, we'll move to the approval of the July 27th, 2020 school board meeting agenda. Can I get an approval motion?
I move.
First by Dr. Shaw.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chester. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Cherishaw.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell.
Yes.
Dr. Herman.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin. Mr. Gallin.
I said yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cherishaw. All right, we'll move along to the superintendent's report. Dr. Scanlon.
Thank you, Mr. McCune. Our summer school pilot is now in its fourth week. And I would say that is going very well. This is a program that we set up for some of our high-risk special needs children. And we debated whether to bring them in person with the six feet of social distancing and teaching them how to wear masks versus online. So we did offer both programs for the kids this year. We have about 50 students in the brick and mortar program with about 50 students attending online for their, for their special need services this summer. Teachers have been instructing the students to build up a tolerance for wearing masks against some of these children are, are, have some, some concerns with wearing masks and for extended period of time. Social distancing of six feet between the students has been achieved. Staff are wearing masks and gloves as they're working with the kids. We have students working on their IEP goals, the academic goals, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech. These were some of the things that were very difficult services to deliver in the spring when we were doing all remote learning. Students do go out on the playground. One of the things that they're, they're teaching the kids to, to use, particularly some of our life skills kids, they're using pool noodles to keep their six feet apart as they're outside. So they're, they're, they're actually having some fun doing that to help them teach what, what social distancing looks like. So, so far that program has been going, it's in its fourth week, going very well. As we prepare for the upcoming school year, this is typically the time of year that I would inform the board about the preparations, the study groups, the strategic goals, the planning for the new teacher induction program and enrollment data as we track, we start tracking that at the end of July to prepare for any influx of, of new students. We have been conducting hundreds of hours of professional development, preparing our staff to teach in a cyber model. I do believe at some point this year, we will either be operating in a hybrid cyber model or a full cyber model until there is a vaccine for COVID-19. Our technology coordinators, under the direction of Mr. Michael Wagman and Dr. Tammy Florio, have been working long hours, creating, conducting, recording, and following up with teachers on professional development sessions. And there are many, many more scheduled before the start of school. Last year, just to give you some enrollment numbers, our official enrollment was 12,078. And again, today was our first look at enrollment for the upcoming school year. We have 12,150 students, an increase of about 72 kids. Our projected enrollment before the, the shutdown was 12,232. That's what we were projecting for this fall. Our kindergarten was projected at 919. Right now, we are seeing kindergarten only at 768. So whether that means there's some, some late enrollment coming, or whether that means there are some kindergarten parents who may be red shirting, if you will, their, their children from this year until we get things settled down with what's happening with the virus. Many other grade levels are already over some of the projected numbers. So we are seeing some, some new enrollments coming in. All of this obviously will change before the start of the school year as we track the, the data for the next, the next five weeks before we start school. As we plan for a very anxious start to this school year, enrollment is something that we will pay very close attention to as we are also staffing a cyber school this year as part of our reopening of schools plans. The reopening plans will be presented on Wednesday, July 29th at 6 o'clock. That will be via Zoom session. I'll be presenting on our options as to how we, we plan to open up the schools on August 31st. The presentation will be recorded and, and the presentation information that I will, I'll be presenting will be posted on our website after the meeting. We will monitor questions during the meeting. We'll do that via a Google Doc and we will respond to as many questions as we can at the conclusion of the presentation. Parents and staff can also send comments and questions to our reopening@wcist.net email address. We have received thousands of emails over the past three weeks and we've been doing our best to respond to each one of those questions. We have frequently asked questions up on our website and information about our, our task force reports also up on our website. Our latest survey that we sent out, as we've done three different surveys since we closed schools back in March, we sent one out last Thursday. We've had more than 700 staff and more than 8,000 parents respond to that survey. I'll share all of those results as that, that survey closes tomorrow. But early returns from parents on some of the various models we've asked about, all in at three feet of social distancing, all online, or a hybrid with half the kids coming in every two days at six feet of social distancing. Those three models, it's a very split community on this topic. Roughly about 40% so far want to see us open with some hybrid model. About 40% want to, want to open with all the kids coming in with less than six feet of social distancing and about 20% want to see us open in a cyber format. So with the latest guidelines released from the governor's office and the Department of Health, six feet of social distancing prohibits us from bringing all kids back. And at the same time, we do have to consider a hybrid online option if we're bringing students back. We will do our best to answer the common questions during our presentation and we'll make a recommendation to the school board. The board is scheduled to vote on the plan at a special board meeting on August 3rd at 7 o'clock. And as with the entire process, since the mandated closure in March, everything remains very fluid with this. In a meeting with the Secretary of Education and Secretary of Health today, several superintendents asked for some additional guidance and we may get some additional guidance then clarification later on this week. So we should all stay tuned with that. We'll continue to keep our staff and community updated as we go through this process and do all that we can to open our schools safely for our students and our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. That concludes your report.
That concludes my report, yes. I'm a very long report Wednesday night.
Yeah, no, I realized that. And on behalf of the board, we know there's been, there's sort of effort by you and many to, to get ready for this with an ever-changing set of requirements, shifting goalposts. So get at it, keep at it. So. All right, next up is public comments on agenda items. Ms. Cherishaw.
Mr. Wagman, did anybody indicate they wanted to speak?
No, they did not.
Okay.
All right, we will move on to the approvals of personnel recommendations by Dr. Olmer. Dr. Olmer.
He's on mute.
Mr. Wagman might have him froze out, so. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Wagman. All right, good evening, Mr. McCune, Mrs. Tierney, and members of our board. Our personnel report for the month of July is as follows. With removals from payroll and resignations, we have two paraprofessionals and one administrator. We wish Dr. Nora Wheeler all the best of luck in her new school district and new position. We are recommending the approval of two retirements. Mr. Charles Anderson, custodian at Henderson High School with 23 years of service, and Mr. David Young, head custodian at Spelman Education Center with 34 years of service. Congratulations to Charles and David. We will miss both of you and we wish you a happy retirements. With additions to payroll, we are recommending the hiring of six new teachers to the district and 10 long-term substitute teachers. We are also recommending one staff nurse and two new support staff personnel. Additionally, we're putting forth one substitute custodian and three extended school year nurses for approval. In personnel events, I communicated three status changes in our professional staff, one status change in our custodial department, and one status change in our support staff. I also communicated and delivered seven transfers in our professional staff. I'm also recommending one sabbatical leave. In additional information, I'm recommending the termination of a part-time custodian that never started the position, a stipend for Dr. Everly for her work in the Cyber Academy, four salary adjustments, a sabbatical rescindment, and the appointment of Ms. Julianne Pecorella as interim principal at Westtown Thornbury Elementary School. Also, I request approval for the contract contractual raises and merit paid for the administrators of the Westchester area school district as outlined in the Act 93 agreement. On an addendum that was created due to time constraints, I am recommending one other retirement of Mrs. Marta Paxson, first grade teacher at East Bradford Elementary School with 27 years of service. We wish Marta nothing but happiness in her retirement. Furthermore, I'm asking for, for the approval of three additional additions to our professional staff, one additional status change in the professional staff, and I have covered and communicated 19 additional transfers. Lastly, in additional information, we have a grade level clarification and a rescindment of a long-term substitute position. I'm respectfully requesting board approval for all personnel matters listed above. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Olmer. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so move.
First by Dr. Herman. Can I get a second?
A second.
Who is that?
Harold.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. All right, any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Cherishaw.
Dr. Herman. She's on mute. She's on mute.
Hi. Yes. Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell.
Yes.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cherishaw. Ms. Paxson, if you're out there, on behalf of the board, I wish to thank you for your 27 years of service and wish you the best in what's, what's next up for you in life there. And I do also like to echo Dr. Olmer's sentiments. We wish Dr. Wheeler nothing but the best. I know I was personally fortunate to have a number of my kids go through Westtown Thornbury under her leadership over the last seven years. Rarely a weekend went by where I didn't see her car over there at least once. So I wish you the best, Nora. All right, moving along here, we will come down to the approval of the consent agenda. I have not been asked to remove any items, but I will pause for a second to see if there is any concerns. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So first by Ms. Chester, second by Ms. Tierney, who had her hand up before Mr. Spackman did. Roll call, please, Ms. Cherishaw.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Dr. Herman.
I'm on mute.
It happens.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Cherishaw. All right, that will take us to our committee reports and up first is education and Mrs. Tierney.
Way back in June, we considered a number of policies, small and big changes. They're all on the consent agenda. So we look forward to finding out more about what's happening with education in August. That's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Tierney. We will move along to people's services and Ms. Chester.
No meeting and no report.
Thank you, Ms. Chester. All right, up next is personnel and Dr. Herman.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. All right, we'll move along to property and finance. Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes, tonight we had a property and finance meeting just prior to the school board meeting and we had one topic on the agenda that we went to and it was a discussion of refunding two bond issuance of two exec, existing debts that we had to refinance. This is a continuation of discussions we had last month with PFM. Our board finance consultant came last month and gave us the details. Basically, we're looking at refunding two bonds, a series double A from 2010 and a series single A from 2015. These particular bond refinancing right now is scheduled to be completed on Monday, August 3rd. There is a potential savings of a half a million dollars by reef, by this refinancing, which is good news for the school district. So potential savings of a half a million is great. We did have two items that we did approve out of the property and finance committee tonight and they both show here on the agenda. If anybody's following, they're both on consent, as you can see, D1 and D2. D1 is, is authorization for the district's financing team, which is made up of our director of business affairs, our superintendent, and PFM are our bond financing consulting to be able to prepare all the necessary documentation and paperwork for the refinancing set. There it is, we just spoke about. The second item that's notated on the agenda is D2. That's also in consent as the property finance committee approved it, as I previously stated, and that's approval of a parameters resolution. The parameter resolution outlies the authority for those particular people on our financing team, as I just spoke to, to be able to handle the refinancing on that date of August 3rd. And they have to follow the board procedures and guidelines that outline exactly what they're doing, of course, looking for the lowest and compliant refinancing bid. That is, the next property and finance meeting will be held on Monday, August 17th. And that ends my report for this evening on property and finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bevel Aqua. All right, we do have a few items under other business. I'd like to start with, I'm going to ask for an approval after I get done reading a statement that the district, the board recently made and it's posted on our equity page on our website. The Westchester School District School Board officially affirms, supports, and adopts the following statement regarding racial equity. The recent deaths of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and many others have caused many to deeply examine the history and mechanisms of systematic racism and to act to dismantle them. Locally, the shock and pain of Bianca Roberson's murder in 2017 continues to resonate throughout our community. We've heard from many members of the community about these issues. The Board of Directors of the Westchester School District stand united in support of racial equity and more broadly, in our commitment to ensure that all In the past several years, the Westchester School District has made progress towards these goals, but we need to do more. To that end, the Westchester School Board pledges to work with the administrators, teachers, staff, students, cover areas of inequity, prejudice, and discrimination at the district, school, and classroom levels, and to identify and implement solutions to overcome these challenges. These efforts must be transparent, inclusive, long-term, and informed by a sustained review of a wide array of data and information that helps us understand inequity and track our progress in eliminating over time. On July 13th, the Westchester School Board Administration received the results of a comprehensive six-month racial equity audit conducted by the Delaware Valley Consortium of Excellence in Equity at the University of Pennsylvania. This report identifies both areas of strengths and areas of challenges that require more intensive and sustained efforts. It also provides a range of practical recommendations. As the district Board pledges to provide regular, transparent updates to the Westchester School District community on progress toward equity. Today, as we redouble our commitment to achieving equity, we ask all members of the Westchester School District community to stand with us in support of social justice and racial equity. The district and the school board have pledged to eliminate racial injustice and all forms of injustice in our schools and pledged to listen to our families. Please join us as we work together to achieve these goals, especially the Westchester School Board of School Directors. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I so moved.
So moved.
First by Dr. Shaw, second by Ms. Chester. Would anyone like to share any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Cherishaw.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell. Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Mr. Spackman.
Yeah.
Dr. Herman. Dr. Herman.
Yes.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Yes.
And carries.
Mr. McCune, before, before you move on, just one thing, I want to commend the board for affirming that very bold statement and also the fact that, that the board went through that equity review. There are not many school district board members that would, that would do that, which, which will become the basis for us as we set goals with our equity work moving forward. So I commend the board. I congratulate the board and I think it is a, it is, it is, it is a great way to go more than just beyond a, a statement, but looking at action steps and action plans based on an external review of, of our program. So congratulations and thanks for doing that and we will all do this journey together.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon, and we really appreciate your efforts in this area as well over the years. You've proven to be quite a leader in this space. Okay, so we have two more motions to approve here. I'll just read them out and just ask for the approval from first and the second. So the first one is the approval of a resolution regarding the school district's emergency declaration, PA School Code Section 52001 and policy waiver. Can I get a first?
You're muted, Sue. I so move.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second was a Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chester. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, Mr. McCune, I can explain this resolution. This is similar to one that we passed back in March when the governor declared a state of emergency and schools were closed. A state of emergency was, was issued again to continue in, on June 3rd. And this, this allows us to have our administrative team look at policies that we might need to have some waivers on during an emergency closure. So this, or this is just during the emergency time. One thing I, one policy I can, I can think of that we may need to have a waiver on would be our attendance policy in terms of the number of notes that a parent can write when a child is sick, as we are certainly encouraging parents not to send kids in if they're, if they're sick. So that may be something, instead of coming back to the board to change that, we would just be able to do that administratively. So this does give us that authority to look at policies where we need to provide some of that relief rather than come back to the board, redo the policies, and then when the emergency is over, come back and undo the policies again.
Thank you for the commentary, Dr. Scanlon. Roll call, Ms. Cherishaw.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Chester.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Dr. Herman. Dr. Herman. She's saying something.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes. Yes.
Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Cherishaw.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, the next motion we have ties back to the first one there and looking for the approval of the Westchester School District Emergency Instructional Proposed Calendar and Schedule for School Year 202021. Approval was requested of the Westchester School District Emergency Instructional Proposed Calendar and Schedule for the school year. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Spackman. Can I get a second?
Second.
Brian.
Second for Mr. Gallin. Thank you, Mr. Gallin.
Now, Mr. McCune, this is a part of the legislative action that took place back in June where school districts, if they're going to use any kind of a, a remote or online learning model, they have to demonstrate and affirm that any of the online time will count toward the 180 days minimum and the 900 hours for elementary, 990 for secondary. So in this resolution, we, we are affirming that, gave some sample schedules if we go to full remote or sample schedules if we go to a hybrid model as to how those hours and, and days would count for the 180 days and the 900, 990 hours.
Thank you, Dr. Scanlon. Any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, and I thank you for the visual clues, everybody. Please, Ms. Cherishaw.
Mr. Spackman.
Yes.
Mr. Gallin.
Yes.
Mr. Bevel Aqua.
Yes.
Mrs. Tierney.
Yes.
Mr. Durnell.
Yes.
Dr. Herman. Dr. Herman?
Yes.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Chester?
Did you get my yes?
Yes, I did, thank you, Dr. Herman. Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I love how Dr. Herman keeps us in suspense. All right, that takes us to the next part of the agenda, which is comments from residents.
I don't know what's going on.
Mr. Wagman or Ms. Cherishore, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
Okay. All right, we will move to our adjournment here. I'd like to close. Last month, you may recall, I provided three quotes about change, hope, and faith. This month, I have a short remembrance and a quote about unity. On July 17, we lost a great American and true leader. His actions always spoke louder than his words. For many, John Lewis was inextricably linked to the civil rights movement, and rightfully so. He was arrested 40 times in his lifetime for doing nothing more than the right thing the right way via nonviolent protests. Though it all remains, through it all, he remained resolute, balanced, and focused on unity. We all need to remind ourselves of the example he set. Now for his quote. "We are one people with one family. We all live in the same house, and through books, through information, we must find a way to say to people that we must lay down the burden of hate, for hate is too heavy a burden to bear. John Lewis, rest in peace." Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
First by Ms. Chester, second? Second by Mr. Durnell? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we'll do it again soon, thank you, everybody.